Hello, I'm Zachary Dolan, production lead at PAC TV. The English philosopher and statesman Francis Bacon said, "Knowledge is power." At PAC TV, we believe it is our responsibility to bring informational programming to residents and voters so you can make informed decisions about issues that impact your community and about candidates wishing to serve. I'd like to thank the candidates for participating in this forum and being committed to an open discussion about their stand on various issues. I am joined tonight by Melissa Matanci, programming manager at PAC TV. We will be acting as moderators for this forum. We are also joined by the candidates for two positions on the Plymouth Select Board: Alan Costello, Patrick Flaherty, Sheila Joyce, Frank Mann, and Anthony Provenzano. The following format will be used in tonight's forum. Each candidate will be introduced in alphabetical order and will have two minutes to introduce themselves, share why they are running for the Select Board, and tell viewers about their qualifications for the position. The candidates will then be asked several questions related to local issues. With each question, we will rotate who will be given the opportunity to answer first. Candidates will have two minutes to respond. At the end of the forum, each candidate will have two minutes to make their closing remarks. A countdown clock in the studio is being used. We ask that all candidates respect these timelines in order to keep this forum fair and balanced for all candidates. This will not be a debate. It is an opportunity for candidates to let voters know who they are and where they stand on certain issues. Ready to begin? We begin tonight with your opening remarks. Candidates, you will each have two minutes. We will begin with Alan Costello.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to thank PAC TV for the invitation for tonight's Candidates Forum. My name is Alan Costello. I'm 57 years old, and I'm a candidate for one of the two spots on the Select Board this May 18th. I'm a longtime resident of Plymouth, having lived here for nearly four decades, raising my family in the West Plymouth section of town. I'm also the owner of a construction telecommunications business that I've operated here in town for the last 28 years. Over the many years, I've made a point to attend the meetings of various boards associated with town government. And in 2014, I was elected to Town Meeting representing Precinct 10. I was also appointed to the Conflict of Interest Committee later that same year. In 2015, I was elected by my peers to be the precinct chair of Precinct 10 and to represent Precinct 10 at the Committee of Precinct Chairs. 2018, I was nominated and elected to the chairmanship position of the Committee of Precinct Chairs. It has always been my goal to devote my time and experience to Plymouth Town Government to help address the issues that concern the taxpayers of Plymouth. I hope it's clear to all the candidates that over the next two to three budget cycles, difficult choices will have to be made that will shape the future of Plymouth for the taxpayers of our town. From the ever-expanding town budget through the skyrocketing cost of deferred building maintenance, the sewer debacle, and the shocking lack of commercial development, it's very clear that the residents of Plymouth know that change is needed. They are watching. Residents are frightened by the increases of their taxes, and they want results.
Your two minutes are up.
That's why I'm a candidate for the Select Board. Thank you.
And now move on to Patrick Flaherty.
Hi, my name is Patrick Flaherty, and I'm running to be the next member of our Select Board. I see your questions as the first step to finding answers together. The Select Board works for all of you. This is your town. I want to bring my skills and experience as a leader to the Select Board to contribute to the solutions of the tough issues that we're all facing right now in town. Personally, I live near downtown with my wife, Lindsay, our dog, Sanka, and our bunny, Yule Bunner. My parents live in Plymouth. I have friends, colleagues, coworkers that live here. You know, Plymouth is home. My previous job, I worked with large cities like Los Angeles, San Francisco, Atlanta, Chicago, and other cities like Somerville and other ones never heard of across the Midwest, where I led teams to improve municipal operations. In 2014, I started my company, Guided Living Senior Home Care. We now have over 100 employees, and we're growing every week. And through my company, we provide in-home care to elders from a little bit of extra help to around-the-clock care. The Town of Plymouth is a multimillion-dollar organization that does require visionary leadership. I will bring my experience as a service provider and as a business leader to the Select Board. You can find out more about me at PatrickforPlymouth.com, and thank you for your questions this evening.
We'll now move on to Sheila.
Thank you. Thanks again to PAC TV for sponsoring the first debate of this campaign season, and thank you to the viewers who are tuning in. Let me introduce myself. My name is Sheila Joyce. I'm completing my first term as a member on the Select Board in Plymouth. Prior to that, I was a member of the Town's Finance Committee, as well as a Town Meeting member who served multiple terms. Let me share with you all why I'm running for the Board again. I've been a resident in town for 16 years. I've seen many changes in the town. In my opinion, many are positive and exciting, but some are also worrisome. The Town's budget for FY '20 is $247 million. That's a scary number. Residential taxes continue to go up. Entergy is shutting the power plant producing operations soon. The school population continues to go down. The $48 million sewer break is still a cloud over us, especially as the Veolia contract winds down two years from now. The Town's excess tax levy capacity is the lowest in over 15 years. Are we looking at a Prop 2.5 override in the next couple of years? The Town's population is over 60,000 people, but the town is green. Almost 40% of the town is over 55 years old. How do we also address their needs? How can we increase revenue that's not placed on the real estate tax bills? We need to be practical in how we can create new commercial, non-residential sources of revenue while at the same time respecting our environmental and natural assets. I believe with my experience and knowledge, we can continue to work together to help Plymouth stay healthy so we can try to work on addressing these opportunities and challenges. I take seriously my responsibilities as being a Board Member. I research and do fact-finding to make the best decision. Thank you for having us.
Now we'll move on to Frank Mann.
Good evening. My name is Frank Mann. I'm a candidate for Select Person. We often ask young children what they want to be when they grow up, and we laugh at their answers. But it's a serious question. So what does Plymouth want to be when it grows up? A collection of strip malls? The cheapest town in the county? The answer is right in front of us, but we often don't see the forest for the trees: Mile Stannish State Forest, the Eel River Restoration, the Living Observatory, the Wildlands Trust and their new headquarters, Ellisville Harbor, the Pine Barons Alliance, the Herring Pond Waterstead Association. We are already an environmental hub, a center for green innovation. In its first year of operation, Mass Autobonds Wildlife Sanctuary attracted 35,000 visitors. If your son or daughter were 6'10" tall, you would dig deep to find the resources to get them into a specialty basketball camp so that they might reap the rewards and have a career. What does Plymouth want to be when it grows up? Where are its resources focused? Leadership begins with vision. Let's get started.
Now we move on to Anthony Provenzano.
Thank you. Thank you. I'm Tony Provenzano. Thank you, PAC TV, and thank you, Zach, and thank you, Melissa. Six years ago, when I was first elected to the Select Board, I could hardly imagine the varied issues that would come before the Board and the challenges that we would face. Although I'd been a Town Meeting member for over a decade, had been on the Finance Committee and chaired the Finance Committee for some time, the sheer breadth and variety of the issues were really astonishing. I think I've constructively met those challenges, and I've been a positive member of the Board, and I'd like to continue. As a practicing attorney, I've lent my expertise to the town in helping to deal with some of the issues like the leases in the downtown. These leases of waterfront property and downtown property are a tremendous resource, and it's important that we act as responsible stewards. The failure of the sewer forced me, a subsequent town response, the planning and the repair reverted in an environmental catastrophe. The complex lawsuit now underway in the Superior Court has been going on for the main part of my tenure on the Board. It's entering a critical stage of negotiation towards a settlement which could affect and benefit the Town greatly. I would like to very much be part of the Board when these negotiations are underway. The Entergy Nuclear Power Plant is about to transition from an operating power plant to decommissioning. Again, there are varied forces at work: the NRC, the state, Holtech, Entergy. All these players will make decisions that will affect this Town. I would very much like to be on the Board as these decisions are being made because I think my expertise and my hard work will go a long way towards a productive solution. So, thank you again, and I look forward to your questions.
Thank you for your opening comments. Now move to Melissa for the first question.
Thanks, Zach. The discussion of town governance and the form it should take to meet the needs of this community has been an ongoing and sometimes contentious discussion. The Commonwealth recommends that a community of more than 35,000 residents should consider reorganizing to a council-based government. Plymouth has more than 60,000 residents. There is a current movement to form a new charter commission to examine this issue. What are your thoughts about the appropriate form of government for the Town, given its population and needs? We'll begin with Patrick Flaherty.
Thank you. Well, first, just to be clear, I'm running for the Select Board. And so that the question for me comes down to two camps that I've been talking to many people across town, and that's you have the idea that we are a very large geographic Town, very large with population, and on the Town Meeting form, you have the idea that to get representation across the entire Town equally, we have our precincts, we are guaranteed that we have representative and very participatory government. Now, we know that twice a year with a third optional meeting can be less inefficient at times. So the question that I think it's worth exploring, because that's what we're all about, we're out to see, this would be ultimately a vote of the people to see if it should be converted to the council form. And I think it's worthwhile to explore all the options and then see what it looks like because it's a very complicated issue. If we turn to a different form, it affects the amounts of funding and things that we can get. So it's not a simple process. I would want to learn all of the aspects of the pros and cons of both sides, down to those levels, including the funding we would get from each side, to then make a decision, and then it would go towards the Town, the people to vote. So for me, it's efficiency versus participation, and both have their pros.
Thank you. We'll move on to Sheila Joyce.
Thank you, Melissa. It's a, as Patrick said, we're running for a seat on the Select Board, so kind of an ironic question, but an understandable question. Summer of 2017, I participated in a Charter Review Commission. They invited present selectmen and past selectmen, and so that was one of the questions they had posed to us. And I shared then, and I will share tonight, that I don't think it's the most efficient form of government. As you said, 35,000, we're at 60,000, we're $250 million budget. How do you include everybody to have their say? I grew up in the city of Boston, mayor, city councilors that represented the whole city, as well as representatives that represented specific parts. So there's too much going on in Town just to have two Town Meetings a year. Get the facts, get it put on the ballot. I know there's talk about putting on the ballot, I believe, in 2020, and let the voters decide ultimately the recipients of which decision and which way to go.
Thank you. We'll move on to Frank Mann.
I feel very strongly that we should retain our present form of government. It's a legacy, it's historic, and it's the most participatory form of government in the nation. I recently walked almost across the country, got as far as Amarillo, Texas, and I was walking to talk to people about community engagement. And I came across many forms of government, and none of them had the participation, the involvement, the engagement that this democratic form of government has. We have over 500 people involved on a day-to-day basis, citizens involved on a day-to-day basis. You can't get more involved than that. What a mayor or a city council form of government does is get you efficiency at the loss of transparency, at the loss of participation. I don't think that the cynicism that exists now about what government can and does for you should prevail in the discussion of what form of government we should have. If we participate more, if we're engaged more, this is the best form of government. If we don't, then essentially we're abrogating our responsibility as democratic citizens in this country. I love this form of government. It's part of the motivation that I'm here today. I'd like to retain it.
Thank you. And we'll move on to Anthony Provenzano.
Thanks, Melissa. Yeah, this is our legacy. This form of government was handed down to us essentially by the pilgrims. The pilgrims in a pilgrim pact basically said that the law would be made, the people would be living by the rule of law, and the law would be made by the community, the community at large. And that's where Town Meeting comes from. It is a highly inefficient, but it is also a broad participatory form of government. We could move to a city form of government, we could take on a mayor, we could take on a council. But let me just say that if voter participation rates stay where they are now, you know, we're going to go to the polls in just a few weeks. And in the past, Plymouth hasn't really done very well in terms of voter participation. Sometimes it's down as low as 12%. No form of government is going to succeed if only 12% of the people go out to vote. So I ask you to vote because it's the only way that any form of government is truly going to be an effective reflection of the want of the people. If we turn to a city form of government, I think, yes, something in this Town will be lost forever. However, the next decennial census will probably add two precincts to this Town, and that's going to bring even more Town Meeting members. Not a bad thing necessarily, again, as long as there's strong citizen participation and strong voter participation. Thank you.
Thank you. And we'll move on to Alan Costello.
Yes, I'd like to start off by saying I love the form of representative Town Meeting. It allows me to go down to Town Hall, talk with others, debate with others, and vote on all sorts of articles throughout the Town: budgetary, bylaws, conservation. So I want to preface what I say by, I love the form of government. But in my life as a business owner, you'd have a very difficult time running a business, running a company, $250 million on two different Saturdays a year. It's very difficult to do the proper business, the proper work that's needed. And I think it lacks efficiency, it lacks sometimes accountability and transparency. I have to say at this time, I'm actually going to be right in the middle of a huge conflict because, you know, just to be full disclosure, I'm actually involved in that very group that you speak of on the Executive Board to explore the possibility to have a Charter Commission question on the ballot in 2020, to put the question to the voter. We have no, at this time, desire for any particular form of government. So we want to leave it to the Charter Commission, which would best case be formed next year, then have to probably work a year or 18 months on their own. So it's probably a two-and-a-half, three-year best-case process, and we may very well come back to Town Meeting. We may come back to Town Meeting next year if it doesn't pass. But I think we are doing a disservice to the community if we don't present all the different viable options. We're actually running into some big headwinds in the next couple of years. We should be at least looking at this. Thank you.
Thank you all for your responses. And Zach?
We move to the second question. As Pilgrim Nuclear Power Plant approaches shutdown, many residents have questions and concerns about the decommissioning process. For example, who will complete the process? A New Jersey company, Holtech, has put in a bid to purchase the property and complete the decommissioning. Residents have questions related to the spent fuel rods, future land use, and spending. Please share your thoughts, concerns, and recommendations for what should be done moving forward should you win this election. We'll begin with Sheila Joyce.
Thanks, Zach. In terms of the power plant closing, it's due to close within the next 60 days. As you mentioned, there are many aspects of the problem. It's not an easy solution. One of the things that you didn't mention that I'm also concerned about is the employees who are going to lose their jobs. The selectmen were notified last week, two weeks ago, a list of how many positions are going to be eliminated. It was almost 300. We know that quite a few people who work at the plant live in the Town. So probably two or three months ago, at the Select Board's meeting, there was a list of, if you want to call it quasi-demands, that the committee wanted to present to Holtech and Entergy. And I said, "What about the employees?" So I said, in terms of, you know, training, retraining, retooling, from what I understand, these people make a decent living, which more power to them, and how can we help them transition from one career to the other? In terms of the safety, the decommissioning, is Holtech a viable company or not? I have to place some faith in the Nuclear Regulatory Commission that they know what they're doing. Safety is a primary, number-one priority in terms of making sure that there's no slip-ups or, you know, dropped issues that don't get attended to. It's going to be a collaborative effort. We're not in the driver's seat, and we just need to stay engaged so we can get as much information as we can and share it with the Town.
Thank you. We'll move on to Frank Mann next.
I was at the recent Nuclear Decommissioning Citizens Advisory Panel, Endicap, I think I refer to it as, and there were some dismaying situations going on. A lot of the people that are on that committee now feel that they've lost their leverage. That committee was always advisory, but they felt they could have real effect on the state and on the process and on the decommissioning process. And now it's been kind of taken, at their suggestion, by a committee at the State House level, but they feel like they're not hearing everything they need to hear. And one of the big questions is the decommissioning trust fund. For the life of Pilgrim, taxpayers paid into a trust fund that was supposed to be used exclusively, as we understood it, for its decommissioning. Because if you don't have enough money to decommission it, you're going to end up with a white elephant, a radioactive white elephant, there for an extended period of time. So what that money's going to be spent on is a little bit up in the air. And there's also the concern, at least it's my concern, that the Town's pilot agreement with Entergy, which was going to pay us $13.5 million in the last two years, and now will be paid assumably by Holtech, will come out of that decommissioning fund. That's a major concern because essentially that's an ethical issue that we should not broach. If we take money out of that decommissioning fund for our own benefit, then what other monies can be taken out for other extraneous expenses? It's a big concern because a lot of people really believe that there's not enough money there right now to decommission it properly. So there's a lot of concerns there, and, you know, our attention needs to be focused on that. And of course, there's also the issue of the 1,500 acres. Maybe we'll get to that later in this discussion. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move on to Anthony Provenzano.
Yeah, thanks. The opportunity we have with Holtech taking hold of that plant is to avoid what they call Safe Store, which is a decommissioning process, keep that plant in mothballs for upwards of 60 years. The Holtech initiative is to do a rapid decommissioning that could have the decommission process, which is really just a dismantling of the power plant and a cleanup of the site over more like a 20-year process. I think the bigger issue is putting the pressure on the federal government to get the spent fuel rods off that site. Right now, most of the environmentalists and most of the politicians who I speak to take it as a fait accompli that those rods could stay there for upwards of 250 years. That is completely unacceptable to the Town of Plymouth. I think we have to advocate constantly to see that our federal officials fulfill the promises they made to us back in the Nuclear Power, the Nuclear Storage Act of 1984. Holtech also provides an opportunity because they have a long-term, or at least an interim storage facility in production in New Mexico. I think the day that the last fuel rod leaves this Town is a very happy day, and the sooner that happens, the better. As to the 1,500 acres, I think we need a balanced approach: some open space, some residential, and some industrial. We sorely lack an industrial base in this Town. We are losing some of the very highest-paying jobs in this Town when these 600 people lose their jobs with an operating nuclear power plant. If we don't replace them with high-paying jobs, we're going to see our children leave. They'll get an education here, and then they will be gone. I'd like to see us diversify our economic base so that we don't lose the next generation walking out the door because there's simply no opportunity in the Town of Plymouth.
Thank you. Move on to Alan Costello.
I wish I was a little bit averse on the nuclear power plant. I have been following it, and I have been following the introduction of Holtech to this situation in the last six months. I'm nervous that the Town has lost its seat at the table. There's very little that they can do to determine what the full outcome will be here. We have to hope that Entergy does the right thing by us and transfers anything they would have done for us with Holtech and that they honor it. But I see that we're going to be in some hot water with that. My biggest problem is the spent fuel rods. I don't understand, and I will learn this hopefully as we go, but I don't understand why, if we have those rods on the same piece of property, why we can't still derive a pilot agreement or monies, as long as they are there under the supervision of a federally-licensed company, whoever that might be, whether it's Entergy or Holtech. But I just have to say, I've been watching from afar, but I don't understand the logistics, quite honestly, of this sale or merger at this time. It confuses me that we've, or not we've let it happen, but someone has let it happen, and it's taken some of the options that we had, at least I thought we had, away from us. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move on to Patrick Flaherty.
Yeah, thank you. And this is one thing that I have appreciated, just going to school with so many people here that have spent years dedicated to calling out NRC, calling out Entergy, diving into this Holtech agreement. I was at the Endicap meeting as well with Frank, and there's some people in this Town that really understand this thoroughly, and it's just, they're just residents. And those are the people I've been learning from, and there's a couple of things, like I agree with Tony and every single other person in Plymouth, and for that matter, South Shore and Cape, that let's get them out of here. If we can get the rods out of here, as they were supposed to be promised to be gone, yeah, number one, great. But as long as we are a spent fuel rod host site, I think that we should fight to make sure that at least the emergency operations budget is provided by whoever's owning the property that those drycasts will be sitting on. You know, secondly, I think it's important that the more strict Department of Public Health residual radiation levels are where we focus our, ultimately, that the site becomes, instead of the more lenient NRC levels. I think it's 10, now this is where I get over my pay grade, but it's 10, like whatever the level is.
Milli renns.
Milli renns, thank you, for Department of Public Health. And for the NRC, it's 25. So it just seems like we should at least be treated equally as our own Department of Public Health would treat any other radioactive-producing site. And then finally, I think into the issue of the jobs and this very important economic piece of our Town leaving, it all comes down to economic development, and I'm sure we'll talk about that later on. But it's a focus of what do we do with that land is so important, and, you know, we'll get to that in a bit, I'm sure.
Thank you. We'll move on to Melissa for the next question.
Thank you. And the next question is about housing and economic development. New housing developments are being built in Plymouth, but still there's limited affordable housing. What do you see as the Select Board's role in addressing the community's concern that young people and seniors cannot afford to buy a home or live in Plymouth? And we'll begin with Frank Mann.
Affordable housing is a hot-button issue, definitely. And the problem in Plymouth has not been that we don't want to deal with it, but we haven't dealt with it. What we're seeing oftentimes, focus on some of the places now that are happening, the Long Pond Road and the White Horse Beach development, is these are like developments of last resort. They weren't thought out as affordable housing to begin with. They were almost punitive in their nature. The Home Depot site specifically was developed or projected to be a totally different development five, six years ago. Then it changed again, and then finally, it's an affordable housing development. And what we really need is long-range planning. We have to get the best developers, both of residential and the best developers of light commercial, and bring them together on the best sites and plan this long-term in the future. We can't let this be pushed by developers that want to make a buck or can't find another use for their property. We can't put people that, workforce people that need affordable housing in locations where we wouldn't want to live. The example, again, on Home Depot, that site has now been scraped of all its trees, the sand has been removed, it's been flattened, and now it's a good housing development? Rather, if we had planned ahead, we would have the opportunity... Rather, if we had planned ahead, we would have the opportunity to have the topography, the trees, and essentially, a much better place to live available for affordable housing. So I think this is really a matter of planning. I think that's my focus on a lot of the issues. We have to have long-range planning. We have to have, bring together the best developers, not just be happening as a last resort.
Thank you. We'll move on to Anthony Provenzano.
Yeah, this is a challenge for the town because we have challenges for economic development, we have challenges for housing. Part of our challenge with these affordable housing/workforce housing initiatives is that we are lumped in with a census tract that brings us all the way into Boston. So the folks who qualify for subsidized housing, affordable housing, really have a wage that is higher than the average in Plymouth, which is kind of odd. Also, some of what exists in Plymouth that really is affordable does not count towards our affordable housing quota. So for instance, we have trailer, you know, manufactured homes in town that are very affordable, but those do not work towards our quota. We have a planning board that basically handles a lot of these issues, but where the Board of Selectment, where the Select Board can go in is basically to be a bully pulpit, to see if we can be flexible and more creative in the way that we approach some of these industrial-commercial areas. Frank talked about the Home Depot. That was a change in zoning, thinking that we were going to be bringing in more retail. Well, I got news for you. We don't need more retail. You can see in town, there's plenty of retail, about as much retail as we can absorb. What we do need is more light industrial, more development that brings jobs in. And perhaps one of the things we should be thinking about in that Exit 5 area is taking what is now a retail corridor that is struggling and rethink it to try to bring in some development using that same infrastructure, but that can bring jobs into the town.
Thank you. We'll move on to Alan Costello.
Yes, as far as affordable housing, it's a difficult challenge, as others have said. We only, at this time, have 3% of the stocks that we need. The state would like to see us, for all the criteria, to be at 10%. But it's not an easy fix. I think Plymouth as a whole has a problem in its growth. There's a ton of residential growth, and it has somewhat of a negative impact on some things. Unfortunately, it's not addressing, all this growth is not addressing the affordable housing to the levels that we needed to. So we have to go back and get the planning board and the different zoning boards and different boards that permit, and get them on some sort of track so we can plan these long-term, big developments that take care of affordable housing in the right locations around town, the right project for the affordable housing. It's a major problem. It has to be dealt with. It's very difficult, as Mr. Provenzano said, to fit the criteria if we have, you know, the rental prices of Boston in our equation. So what we have to do at the state level, work our way out of that so we become a little bit of our own entity, and I think that might help clear it up going forward to some degree. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move on to Patrick Flaherty.
Thank you. No, and for me, it's about Plymouth staying in control of its own destiny. So, you know, with regards to affordable housing, I get excited because we have some great professionals that work as employees for the town of Plymouth, and it's, we've got to explore new ideas, out-of-the-box type of thinking. So one thing that Plymouth has, we've got a lot of land. And the issue with a lot of developers and the price of the housing that they're building has to do with the price of the land that they have. So let's get creative. I, you know, I'm not a developer, but talking to people and just trying to throw things out there, what if we, as Plymouth, created the idea where instead of having a 40B-type of project, which would come in and put a lot of infrastructure issues in one area, as a town, if we work towards having 1% of that 10% required amount that would then block all 40B permits of year-round affordable housing, we can then control our own destiny? So as Plymouth, let's have maybe an idea like a land auction for developers, where the price of the land would be lower, the product that would be built would be set by the town, and the price would be set. That way, we can thoughtfully put around town different houses here and there in different locations that make sense and not be one big infrastructure crush all at once. And then, really, economic development. I see, like, housing is tied to economic development. If you create the centers of activity that are interesting, a workforce that will become rooted with a quality of life, you will have employers follow. Like anecdotally, I talked to several business owners. They are having a tough time getting a workforce. Instead of going out and trying to attract a specific industry or a specific company, which is kind of the tendency that people say, we'll go get Amazon to come here, let's create an environment that businesses will want to invest in. If we build a strong community, the businesses will want to come and invest in Plymouth with their new locations.
Thank you. We'll move on to Sheila Joyce.
Thank you. A very sensitive issue. Plymouth doesn't do a good job. What I want to say in terms of affordable, also workforce housing. Affordable housing, workforce housing, they're a little bit different, a little bit similar. As Tony said, we get lumped in with Boston. The income is around $81,000. The average income in Plymouth is not anywhere near $81,000. How can the Select Board help move that along? When Mr. Cohen has presented different articles for CPC, one of the key aspects of CPC is supposed to be for housing. I sit on the Capitol Outlay Committee, as well as on the board, obviously, and when he makes presentations, I ask, where's the housing piece of the puzzle, of the proposal? So I think there needs to be a little more concerted effort there. I know that they're working with the Affordable Housing Authority in terms of a project for a couple of million dollars. What else can the town do? Recently, the town meeting approved a second town planner for the town. Lee Hartman, who's the director of that department, had two people, I guess in the economic downturn 2008, 2009, they eliminated one of the positions, so we've been out without that second position for quite a while. And it was just approved, so hopefully, that will be a little bit of an impetus to get the momentum going. And grants, as Patrick said, there's a lot of land in town. You know, how can we do it, whether it's infrastructure? I would like to see more concentration of potential housing on the sewer line, so more users can get onto the sewer line as well, which would help that aspect as well of operations. And we're somewhere between 3% and 4%, as Alan said, we're supposed to be at 10. We need to get increments, and we have a long way to go, I think.
Thank you all for your responses. We have Zach with the next question.
Thank you, Melissa. Now, go on to question four. What do you see as the impact of commercial and residential growth in our community, and what will you do to protect our natural resources for residents and future generations? We'll start with Anthony Provenzano.
Sure. You're right, it's a balance. We have to balance the economic growth we need and preserve the natural resources we have. This town is unique in that we have basically an urban core, the north, the downtown, and then we have beautiful rural pastoral areas. So the challenge is to create economic growth where you already have development. You have vibrant industrial parks that can be more vibrant. We have sewer district, which can be, where development can occur rather than having sprawl and spread. So I think the challenge we face as a town is to have economic development in areas where it already exists, make it more intense, use the sewer plant, which is underutilized as it is, and create conditions, again, for jobs for local residents, who then can enjoy the areas that we have that are really gorgeous in this town. The state forest and other open areas, we've had a concerted effort to buy open space in this town for quite some time, and that should continue. But we also need to balance the needs of people to work and to recreate.
Thank you. Move on to Alan Costello.
Residential and commercial development. The residential development, and we have a host of it going on around town, is a double-edged sword. If we put these residential developments in that don't have an age restriction, if you have one child in the home, the town is already upside down. The cost to educate a child is $14,000, $15,000. The average tax bill is between 6 and 7. So although we have a lot of residential growth, it's not necessarily leading us out of the problems that we have. The commercial development that we have in town, 10, 11, 12%, is far lower than a community of our makeup would need. We need to get to 35% to 40% commercial. Now, I know that's not something you can do overnight, certainly not easy. I'm sure historically, Select Boards in the past have worked very hard to achieve that. But we have got to figure out a way to get more commercial development in town, to take the burden off the taxpayer. All of the raises in taxes fall, unfortunately, on the taxpayer. I think we're at 80%. So at this time, I would hope to work collaboratively with a board, the board, the other boards in town. We really have to explore and develop some commercial development to offset the residential. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move on to Patrick Flaherty.
Thank you. So I see these two things very much linked, and you, as Tony brought up, it has to do with the zoning that's already in place. So the zoning's going to define where we focus. Anyone who's coming in here from a commercial or a new industry standpoint is not going to try and change our zoning. They're going to look at those areas that are already appropriate for that. So with that, to have the economic growth and development, it does require housing because this is real. If you do not have a workforce that's going to take the jobs, the new companies are going to try and fill, someone coming from Boston is not going to care if it's Plymouth, if it's Kingston, if it's Plimpton, if it's Pembroke, if it's Carver. They're going to look for areas that are interesting, where their employees and their workforce is going to be rooted. So Cordage Park is a great example of this happening right now. We have a lot of new residential units that are going to create this anchor for a workforce, and it's going to bolster the strong North Plymouth community, it's going to increase the economy there, and that's the type of things that companies are going to look for when they're coming in and trying to decide where they want to put their next office or their next expansion. So it comes down to quality of life. If we're creating a strong quality of life and a rooted workforce, the businesses will come. And importantly, on what Alan said, if we're going to do this and set up an attractive area for businesses to come, we need to have a streamlined and thoughtful permitting process because I, you know, anecdotally, again, I've talked to folks who, it is a very arduous task to go through, the way the process is set up, the timing of things, just the way it's structured can put a very big burden on getting something moved in and done here in Plymouth. So between the housing anchoring and workforce, the thoughtful and streamlined permitting process, I think those are the two keys that will bolster that commercial economic growth.
Thank you. Move on to Sheila Joyce.
Thank you. A tough balance, commercial versus residential. As Alan mentioned, the tax base is about 80% derived from residential tax bills. Commercial contributes about 9%, and there's other little pockets that contribute the rest of the revenue in town. The last five, six, seven years, and we've seen statistics, that the commercial base has basically stayed flat. When you think of how can a town this big have no changes in appreciable numbers, it's in the 720, 730 range. There's some debate about commercial tax rate versus residential, should we have a split tax rate? I have advocated for that with the concept of even if it was a, you know, 10% 10-cent decrease for residential, kind of give them a break, the negative to that is that, well, that will deter commercial from moving in. I personally don't think it will. If it's, it doesn't have to be $20 and $10, but I think it needs to be a little bit of a benefit to the residents. They pay the bulk of the bill. An example of where I don't think the town makes enough of an emphasis, Jessica Casey was the Director of Plymouth Growth and Development, and then she left, went to work for the MBTA, and then they brought in a woman, Judy Barrett. Judy Barrett left, I think probably a year ago, maybe even more of a year ago. She was in the position not a long time. This position is supposed to help do some liaison and get businesses in town. That position is now filled by a part-time, you know, interim person. The response I've heard is that it doesn't pay enough. The town needs to make a concerted effort, upgrade the job, and get someone in, so the focus is that. Work with Lee Hartman's new planning person and get some energy and get it going. Thank you.
Thank you. Finally, we'll move on to Frank Mann.
It may be by bias, I am a member of Board of Directors of the Pine Barrens Alliance in town, but I heard the question as more, how do we protect our open space? How do we protect our environment from growth and development? Because I think that's what's happening more so than our open space is infringing on our growth and development. I think our quality of life, I think our air and water are in jeopardy, and the feeling we have of what community we came and wanted to live in are in jeopardy, and that's the question, as I heard it. And one of the things I think we need to do is we need to really embrace what our identity is as a community. We do know and we understand that we're a very historic community, but we are also a remarkable environmental community. There are so many wonderful organizations that are doing research right now that are raising hundreds of thousands, if not millions, of dollars. Today, I was at the, it wasn't the groundbreaking, but there was an Earth Day ceremony along the town brook, and it was all about what work has been done, what fabulous work has been done, the grant money that's come in to remove dams, restore the herring run, and restore that wonderful area at the center of town. We've been doing that in many, many places in town. Again, I'll mention the Mass Audubon Wildlife Sanctuary. In its first year, 35,000 people came to that site. And was that with new pipes and new structures and high-rises? Was it like a Foxwoods? No, it was a place where basically, they restored the stream and they allowed people access to the beauty that's here. We undervalue completely our environmental value in this town, our environmental heritage, the legacy we have of a rare ecosystem, of rare species, of beautiful streams, 430 ponds. Those things are the key to ecotourism, which brings people in that want to stay more than a day, and the key to many other things. It's the key to research.
Two minutes are up.
Thank you.
We'll now move on to Melissa for the next question.
Thank you. Our fifth question is next. Marijuana legislation in Massachusetts has come with both economic opportunity and unanticipated issues. As a Select Board member, what role do you think local government should play in the sale and distribution of recreational marijuana? We'll start with Alan Costello.
As far as the marijuana question, I, back two years ago, I believe it was, in the state ballot, voted against it. But the town of Plymouth voted for it. So I'm firmly in favor of getting the shops set up as quickly as we can, set up all our host agreements, derive the tax that we would receive as a town, and let the business, or the businesses, run the way that they feel they should run. It's a capitalist society. I think we should let them open up. I think we're allowed four at this time. We might be allowed five. I think we're on the borderline of it. But I would recommend getting them open as quickly as possible in the three or four light industrial sections of town that we have allocated in a certain bylaw to put them in, and let the business sort it out for themselves. And as residents who voted for it, they can use the service. And as a taxpayer, I can, or we can, put the money back into the town coffees and get along with the business of marijuana. It's been voted on, it was approved, and I say, let's get on with it. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move on to Patrick Flaherty.
Yeah, thank you. I mean, I'm in agreement with the idea, yeah, it is voted on, it's approved. Now, it's up to us to do it safely and thoughtfully, rolling out in Plymouth. My next-door neighbor of my office in the industrial park is one of the approved recreational marijuana stores. And so they, you know, it was kind of, they had these open meetings where it was, anyone in the neighborhood could come, and it was right when they had all the stories of the lines down the highway of people and all kind of the infrastructure type of chaos. And I walked up and they're like, we're going to make sure we have parking, we're going to make sure we have all these things set up. They really were trying to be accommodating to the business in the area, and I just said, well, you know, frankly, you're starting a business, you're following the rules, you are accommodating the area, you know, good luck to you. You know, this is what we voted as a town, and I support that, but safely and thoughtfully. And let's, as a town, take the taxes from it and put this towards some of the other issues that we were talking about ongoing as a benefit for the town. So, yeah, let's move forward, but safely, thoughtfully. And my experience, at least so far, with one of those was very positive in terms of there being a... being a good neighbor in the community.
Thank you. Next is Sheila Joyce.
Thank you. In terms of the marijuana issue, as Alan said, I was the same. I voted against it personally. The town voted it in 52%, 48%. So it's time to support it. We've had various companies, marijuana growers, transporters, all different kinds of people present to the Board of Selectmen in the last year, year and a half. Right next door to PAC TV is Triple M, and they just reopened on Saturday. And they were shut down for a variety of reasons with the state, and I was glad to hear that Triple M did open in terms of medicinal services. I took a tour of the building. It's unbelievable what they have poured into the building, electrically, money-wise, employees, equipment. And let's start collecting it. We need additional sources of revenue and we need to do it. In terms of what should the town's role be with these businesses? They've done various outreaches to the police chief, the fire. Traffic and safety are two of my concerns in terms of making sure that we don't have the traffic in the lines. In terms of security, the building is highly secure in terms of Triple M. I haven't had the opportunity to take tours of the other locations. And again, safety is a priority. But it's here, it's here to stay, and let's make the most of it and be a partnership with the business. And who knows? When we've had different people come to the Board, they had a transportation company a couple of weeks ago. I saw a presentation on the planning board of a company that just wants to be a courier for cash. There's all different kinds of offshoots, and let's welcome into the town as long as they thoughtfully plan their business and communicate with the town manager, the select board, the police and the fire. And it's a win for everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move on to Frank Mann.
Thank you. I think I agree with all my fellow candidates here today that this is a very straightforward issue. It's legal, it's potentially a tax revenue, a good source of that. I look at the history of the town over the last 15 years. I covered the Board of Select Persons in the last 10 years, and I never saw a liquor license turned down. There are now 125 or so liquor licenses in town, and I guess you have to say that it's been good for the town. Probably back 10, 12 years ago, people were worried about that. But responsible businesses that are regulated by the state and other authorities, a responsible government has reviewed them and keeps watch over them. And I view the same as marijuana. It's a cultural issue. For me, marijuana is not a big deal. I understand people's concerns, especially in this age of opiate addiction. I don't believe it's a gateway drug per se. I believe it's more, gateway drug is more societal issue, but I truly believe that we should treat this normally. I truly believe that we should have this not only in the light industrial parks, but recreational law should be allowed in other areas as well. I think we are intelligent and that we can supervise this and we can do it well. And I think we should move forward. Enough discussion of it, let's move forward in a rational way. Thank you.
Thank you. And we'll now go to Anthony Provenzano.
Yeah. In 2016, the people of the Commonwealth voted in a referendum whether or not to have regulated sale of recreational marijuana. And the town of Plymouth, by 52 to 48, voted in favor. That referendum included a provision that gave local control and allowed the people of the town to make a determination whether they wanted to have a moratorium or whether they wanted to ban the sale of retail marijuana in their town. I supported hearing from the people of the town of Plymouth because I'm not entirely convinced that the political class of this town is necessarily in tune with the people of the town. So I think it's really, quite frankly, to the eternal shame of the Board that we didn't allow to hear from the people. Now, you've heard from Frank, the next move, this town has taken steps to limit the location of retail marijuana to light industrial parks. But the next move will be to have retail establishments in the other commercial zones of the town. And quite frankly, I would like to hear from the people of the town before we make that move. The analogy to the liquor licenses, well Frank, we have in fact denied some liquor licenses. But the other difficulty that I have is the folks who come before us to get host agreements aren't necessarily the entities that end up operating the places. As we found recently, we were made a very, very elaborate presentation by folks who represented themselves as wanting to run a retail marijuana operation. But the ink was not even dry on the host agreement before we found out that in fact that entity was under agreement from a larger national company. Marijuana is here to stay, I would guess, and in fact, it may go national. And if it goes national, the entire regime that we've been dealing with is going to change radically. So I'd also caution that this town not get too addicted to the revenue because it could disappear.
Thank you all. We'll go back to Zach.
At this point, we will turn the questions and comments over to our candidates. Candidates, we're going to give each of you the opportunity to ask a question to another candidate. You will have 30 seconds to ask your question. Questions must be directly related to issues facing the town and/or the candidate's position on these issues. The responding candidate will be given the standard two minutes for their response. Patrick Flaherty, you are first to ask a question.
So one question to one person?
One question to any candidate.
Oh, cool. All right. Well, I guess I'll ask Sheila, in the last three years of your being on the Board, you know, what was one of the accomplishments or things or issue that you feel proud of that you, you know, worked to move towards, you know, for Plymouth?
So I'll share two that I'm proud of. Anybody who has watched me on the meetings or even as an advisory finance committee member, town meeting member, I ask questions, I do my homework, I dig facts. And the transparency of sharing facts has increased exponentially. We do not vote on things if we don't have the facts. I, if I don't have the, either the thorough amount of facts or gee, I still have some questions that are unanswered, I don't vote on it. I ask the chair to postpone it. As an example, just before Christmas, Jonathan Beeter and his sewer department made a presentation about the transition to Veolia when they were leaving in 2021. We probably had about 150-page report to go through, and they made a presentation that lasted about 45 minutes. And I said, I am not voting on this, listening to a presentation for 45 minutes for something that's going to impact the town for the 20, 30, 40, 50 years out there. We had more time to get questions answered, we did more research, and they came back after Christmas. And we had another discussion about the operations and the transitions. Another thing that I'm very proud about, and some people don't agree with me, Town Hall is back open one night. I live in Plymouth, I work in Cambridge. I cannot do things at Town Hall that we're all paying for by pulling into the Kingston train station at 6 o'clock at night. So when the Town Hall was being planned, I strongly urged the town manager to get it back open one night. I did a survey of 15, 20 towns on the South Shore. We were the only one who was not open at night, which I thought was a disgrace. And we are the biggest town by far. It's now open till 6:30 at night. Some people like it, some people don't. But when I'm in there, it's nice to see citizens coming in and doing their business.
Thank you for your answer. Now Sheila, it is your opportunity to ask a candidate a question.
Sure. So I'll return the favor back to Patrick. So I had the opportunity to work with Patrick on some Plymouth Growth and Development in terms of the parking, Park Plymouth. So Patrick, you know, you've been involved with the Board for a couple of years. How do you see the town solving the downtown parking problem? And if you could just share what the view is, the Court Street purchase that you were interested in, you know, what was good about that or what was not good about that?
Sure. Yeah, and it's definitely, it's a pickle. And to give some background to my professional experience, four years ago, I was asked by the Select Board to join the Plymouth Growth and Development Corporation Board. Based on my experience working with the cities like Los Angeles, San Francisco, Atlanta, Chicago, and their municipality parking programs, that was how I first came on to the Board. And over the last years, it's, you know, you think you're working with Los Angeles and the issues that are there, you think, oh Plymouth, that'll be cute, you know? It is so complex because we're in a high demand season for three and a half months and then a very low demand. So the issue is that you don't necessarily have the financials to support the parking structures that would traditionally be able to be put up to address the demand. And so Park Plymouth, for as long as I've been on the Board, has been trying to find an alternative to the rental, the lease that it's had for its office. And it's a very limited area because we need to be within a footprint, we need to be within walking distance for all the workers. And so that opportunity came up to be explored, the 134 Court Street. We went through, did a lot of due diligence. Come to find out, there was a lot of issues with that building in terms of the maintenance and the repairs that would have had to go into it. And after really a thoughtful process, we determined that that was not the best decision to move forward with for the Park Plymouth offices. So we remained in our current offices. But really, I think that what I'm proud of is that the businesses that are in downtown Plymouth and on the waterfront, over the last couple of years, we've worked very diligently to get their feedback. So there was a great discussion last year with the waterfront businesses. We just had another open community forum with the businesses in downtown about Middle Street Lot, and it's engaging those businesses to determine what they want, as I see as our job.
Two minutes are up.
Thank you.
Now Frank Mann, it is your opportunity to ask a fellow candidate a question.
Thank you. I think I'll ask Alan Costello a question because he brought up, well, he acknowledged that he's a member of the, a committee that is working to see a change in our form of government. The title of that committee, I think, is called the Plymouth Government Transition Committee. And that assumes, I think, that a transition is both necessary and will happen, or at least it suggests that, implies that. And while I don't agree, I'd like to know what form of government he prefers and why it would be an improvement.
Thank you for the question. I apologize, I didn't think it had government in there. I think it was the Transitional Charter.
Oh, maybe Plymouth Charter Transition Committee.
Transition. And that was our hope, and that is continued, will continue to be our hope, that we put the idea out there, we gather the 15% of the required registered voters to get, simply to get a question on the ballot in 2020. I think based on a lot of the answers we heard today, we've tried a lot of things, we've exceeded the state guidelines, even though they're not hard and fast, but we've gone by 35,000 people years ago, we're in excess of 60,000 people. We're dealing with a budget, two weeks ago, quarter of a billion dollars by all good people, but volunteers, some with some expertise, some with not so much financial expertise, but conservation and bylaws and things of that nature. It's a great group. I like representative town meeting. But we would be kidding ourselves, or we'd be doing a disservice for the residents if we didn't explore other things, Frank. I'm not, and I don't think anyone in the committee is advocating for any particular government at this time. No one's suggesting a mayor. There's probably five or six types of governments we can have. We can have strong mayor, weak mayor, strong town council, weak town council, there's a host of different things. I don't know if a mayor will solve all the problems. However, I think continuing to do the same thing is not working. And we're very close to a pretty chaotic time where we're going to have to make some major cuts or have an override, and that's not going to go over well. So in that same timeframe, let's at least explore some other options.
Thank you.
Move on, Anthony Provenzano, it's your turn to ask a fellow candidate.
Sure. Alan, I'm going to keep you on it.
All right.
So we've been very, very successful in the last couple of years. We've gotten federal money for dredging, we have now gotten state money for dredging, we have matched that with town funds. Could you talk to us about how that's going to help the downtown harbor and what the next steps in the harbor plan are that you think that the town should go forward on?
I think that's a great result. We have somewhere in the neighborhood of $19 million worth of dredging for Plymouth Harbor to a bill to the taxpayer of 2.5 million. It's a heck of a good deal. The harbor is a huge asset to the town. Now, there's talk of small, medium-sized cruise ships coming in, and that may very well happen, but that's not going to turn the tide for us single-handedly.
No pun intended.
There you go. Very sharp. But there was an article in, I believe it was the February Economist, where there's a host of foreign companies with some American partners that are gearing up and getting ready for a huge wind farm infrastructure in and around the Cape. So I think, to Tony's point, that Plymouth could be, maybe not a deep-water harbor that we're going to see a lot of equipment come through, but you're going to see a lot of workers, a lot of service industry. So the fact that we've put the harbor in good order at this time for the next 70 years by all accounts, because the last time we were dredged was 50 to 70 years ago, I think it's a great thing for the town. And whoever did the work, and I know it was multi-year, over the last 20 years, 30 years, they deserve a huge amount of credit. But those are the type of things, I think if we had a single point of government, you would actually be at the seat or at the table for a lot of those type of grants and a lot of those initiatives because people at the state level, people that give out the monies, they tend to, this is just one, one point of a different form of government, they tend to develop a relationship with a single, I don't want to use the word mayor because I don't want to taint it, but with a single point of our local government. Thank you.
Thank you, Alan. Now it is your opportunity, you have 30 seconds to ask a question.
I was going to give Tony a softball, but no.
That was a softball. I let you shine.
No, I appreciate that.
We need to stand.
That's right. No, honestly, I was, I was just going to ask Tony a lot of the same lines as Sheila was asked in his tenure as a selectman. What is the high point that you achieve? Let me ask you what the low point is, and then as a softball, what is the typical week in the life of a selectman if one of us are lucky enough to achieve a spot?
Yeah, the high point is probably also the low point. That sewer force main break was, you know, when you're sitting in church on a Sunday morning and your phone explodes and you're finding out that there's raw sewage pouring out onto somebody's private land, and there's got to be an immediate response. In the next two weeks, you've got a conga line of trucks that are running from the pump station and bringing it up to the sewer plant because your force main has been destroyed. And then you have to make some very, very difficult decisions on what to do to respond, whether to go with, you know, column A, column B, column C, and column C's numbers just knock your socks off, but you know it's the right thing to do. So you vote to do it. And then you have to come up with a financing response. And now we're embroiled in this lawsuit. So, you know, it was a low point, but also I think we responded extremely well. I think we've got ourselves out of a very, very difficult position, and now it's time to really close the chapter, do the book, you know, make it happen because we have this, our town council did an excellent job creatively bringing all the parties to the table and keeping them there. So now we have to close the deal. What's the typical week like? Well, there is no typical week. One thing, there is a standard, you get the package on a Friday afternoon, you absorb it over the weekend, you do your homework. I can tell you that of the members of the Board that I've been privileged to serve with, nobody does their homework better than Sheila. Nobody comes in better prepared than Sheila. She really turns over every little rock, which is a good thing. And then there are other, there are places to be. I tell you, one of the, as you may have noticed, I've had my arm in a sling in the last six weeks, and I'll tell you, it's been like hell. Because I haven't been able to get around to all the places that I like to be.
Sorry, Anthony.
Yeah, I know, I know, I got on a roll. Sorry.
So since we have a little, a few more minutes, we want to give you the opportunity to either speak about a topic that has not been addressed or speak to questions or comments that were addressed earlier in the forum. Again, this is not a debate. You will have two minutes and we'll start with Sheila Joyce.
In terms of things that haven't been addressed, one thing that I'm concerned about is the school system. We have a fabulous school system. We have 12 schools. The budget hit over $100 million this year. Our school population continues to go down. When I moved into town 16 years ago, it was well over 9,000. Now it's 73, 7400. The teachers do a fabulous job. I had the opportunity to go to Japan a couple of years ago, and I went with three teachers. They were fabulous. They were so engaged and so interested. The students, my husband and I don't have any children, and I was just amazed at how intelligent these young men and women were, well behaved, good representatives of the town. But it's a declining population. How do we balance those budget needs? We have a huge transportation challenge that we don't get a lot of reimbursement from the state. Funds decrease, there's a huge tech- Funds decrease, there's a huge technology gap. Dr. Myestis and Dr. Costin has said that the technology in the school in terms of what the students have during the day, very obsolete. I've looked at the numbers, the numbers are, there's over 9,000 devices in between teachers and students, there's a little less than that. So it's a huge challenge. I think even though Mass General Law says the school department can kind of do their planning, and I don't want to say in a vacuum, but on their own type of thing, it's a talented school committee, it's a very talented administration, and I think we need to have more collaboration between the two parties so we can have a good product. We're now spending over $17,000 per pupil, which is well over the state average. How do we make the best of that and well as balance it with the budget? Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now move on to Frank Mann.
It's been mentioned, but I'd like to bring back up the 1,500 acres, the so-called 1,500 acres, which was a buffer, or still is a buffer around the workings of the Pilgrim Nuclear Power Plant. That property includes one of the rarest, most unique ecosystems in Massachusetts, and is also the highest point between Mount Cadillac in Acadian National Park in Maine and North Carolina. It is a vista worth millions, and it shouldn't be sold to people that can afford million-dollar homes. It should be in the public's interest, it should be in the public's side. And I think we need to act soon and aggressively to make sure that that piece of property is acquired by the town one way or another. There are many, many groups, environmental and otherwise, residential, the Pine Hills, I'm sure, the residential developers interested in, of course, the town is interested as well. And I believe a beautiful compromise can be reached with that, because that property can retain its ecological significance. The ridge should never be sold, should always remain in its pristine state as much as possible. But there's also the opportunity for some expansion potentially of residential and for light commercial or industrial. I believe a beautiful compromise can happen there that will benefit everyone in the community, will cement our environmental heritage, will link up to the Foothills Preserve, which is the town's, the Mass Autobahn Wildlife Sanctuary, potentially the land along the Eel River and the County Woodlot, and all the way to the Mile Standish State Forest. I believe that that piece of property is critical to the town's future, and we should not lose sight of that, and we should move aggressively to make sure that happens. Thank you.
Thank you. Now move on to candidate Provenzano.
I think it's McGuntacoot, not Cadillac, it's Mount McGuntacoot.
Okay.
Yeah, we won't quibble over that. One of the things we haven't talked about, we may or may not talk about in upcoming debates, is some of the financial challenges facing the town with regard to its unfunded liability for pension and its unfunded liability for other post-employment benefits. These numbers are truly sobering. I believe that at last count, the unfunded liability on pension was 150 some-odd million. I did email the Director of Finance today to see if the latest actuarial figures were out. The last count on the unfunded liability on other post-employment benefits were, I believe, up to 597 million. The town has a plan to deal with the unfunded liability on pension, insofar as we have a $14 million line item in that 200 and some-odd million budget, which is scheduled to go up at a rate of 8% per year over the next several, next decades or so, so that by, I believe, 2038, we will have that unfunded liability fully retired, so long as market conditions are consistent with what we hope. We have no real plan to deal with that unfunded liability on the post-employment benefits, other than to throw a relatively modest amount of money, which will never be enough to really deal with it. So I think that's one of the challenges we face as a board and that any of you might face as you find yourself sitting on the board.
Thank you. We'll now move on to candidate Costello.
Now, there's two topics I thought may come up this evening, and they may come up as we continue the forum season. They're sort of tied in together. They're town building, infrastructure maintenance, and road maintenance. Two things that are near and dear to the present residents today. These are probably number two and three behind taxes that they speak about. We didn't talk about it here, and I don't put any of the blame on the present board, but as a town meeting member, I'm surprised that a lot of times we vote money in for some projects, and the project doesn't materialize. And then we see it back in front of us two or three years later, the price tag has doubled. There's been some examples of some projects coming back in front of us three times and literally tripling. So it's very discouraging for the taxpayer to see that a relatively manageable problem was not dealt with, and now it's become a crisis. We have to spend the money, and they're upset about it. That's on the building side. There's a host of buildings, there's 32 buildings, I believe, depending on who you, what report you look at. And I'm sure it's a overwhelming job to keep all 32 buildings on the town side up to snuff, but we as a town haven't done a good job at it. I'm going to make that one of my key topics, issues, to get involved with and keep my eye on, as well as roads. And roads, everybody has the same complaint, the roads are lousy this time of year, there's not enough money to put back into the roads. But we've got to do something for the average taxpayer that tries to navigate around town all year long. We've got to address the problem for them. Thank you.
Thank you. Now so we move on to Patrick Flaherty.
Nailed it, Alan, buildings. I think that was one I was expecting to come up. It's been a lot of coverage on it. And I think it's looking at ideas that have worked. So, okay, meals tax, great example of what can produce a beautiful town hall that did not have any taxpayers' dollars coming out of it. It's doing really well. What if we took that meals tax, we eliminate the sunset on it, and designate that to be for facilities maintenance and improvements? Another thing that gets me and Alan, yeah, you're all over it, it's the idea that you could have a capital project, which is any project that has at least a five-year lifespan or $15,000 of total expense, that has to go before a yearly process, there's a capital outlay expenditure committee that does a ranking, which really pits the departments against each other within our own town. But the one that really stands alone is that facilities maintenance director. I would want to explore, working with our professionals and the town meeting, and see, can we set aside a budget for that facilities maintenance director that he can operate from? He's a professional, he knows what he's doing, and now that department is growing, we have an operations manager, and do something real about it. Give him a budget, say you can have a planned expense from, you know, a certain amount, we're going to plan to do that anyway for each year in our budget, and just let him do what needs to be done, when it needs to get done. There's a couple of examples that, for example, the library roof, go to bid, there's no one that bids. Now we come back, the prices increase, it's $3.2 million now. These are the type of things that if we could be a little bit more nimble, we could get in front of, and that still is within our current form of government, that we could maybe make some adjustments. But it would take some work to look at this and work with our town professionals. That's what I'm excited to do, is work with our towns' professionals and be that advisory board to them to make change and progress in creative ways.
Thank you all. Now move to Melissa for closing remarks.
Thank you. Candidates, we are now going to give you two minutes for closing remarks. Feel free to speak directly to the camera to address your voters and constituents. Alan Costello, you are up first.
I'd like to again thank PAC TV for the opportunity this evening. It was a great learning experience. I want to thank the other candidates. I learned a lot, and I think we put our best foot forward. My platform is very simple. It's simple in construction, but like anything that matters, will take a lot of hard work by all concerned. First, we must stabilize property taxes through sensible spending. This certainly means tough spending choices will have to be made. The spend and tax gravy train must be derailed now. Second, we must promote new sources of income for the town. We touched on this earlier. This includes creative valuation and implementation of non-tax sources of revenue. Very important. We have to help out the taxpayer. More importantly, our commercial tax base of 11 or 12% of total tax revenue is totally unacceptable, and has led to the tax burden being shouldered largely by the residents. Additionally, continued non-55-plus residential development is a net tax loss for the town, further adding to the tax burden for existing residents. We have no choice but to address this. Third, our infrastructure, which I just spoke of a short time ago, is in a total state of decay. Deferred maintenance is no longer an acceptable strategy. We must adopt a comprehensive infrastructure policy that includes town-owned buildings in a more aggressive road improvement program. This will cost money. It only serves to highlight the need to make tough spending choices in other areas and increase our commercial tax base, most importantly. I hope this evening has helped the viewers see the difference among all of us candidates. Please prioritize voting on May 18th. Your vote this year matters more than ever. I would appreciate your support. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Alan. We'll move on to Patrick.
So the top priority I see for the Select Board is to provide a safe environment for all residents. And as we've talked about, Plymouth is approaching a financial wall that will affect police, fire, DPW, teachers, town employees' ability to provide their vital services. It's obscene how our tax rate has affected our residents, and there's one client specifically that I know, that she's lived in her home in Plymouth in the 80s, she's now on a fixed income, and she's struggling to live and afford to live in the town that she loves because of rising taxes and other costs. Her story's not uncommon, and I believe it's a responsibility of Plymouth's government to provide a consistent and stable tax base as much as possible. We can't continue to rely on high taxes of property owners, and we do need visionary leadership to drive economic development. I'm a committed volunteer across several different groups in Plymouth, and that's my way of stepping up to, as community service, to give back. And I really see that this Select Board is a way to give back and continue that sense of service. For Plymouth to thrive, we do need visionary thinking and collaboration without ego. And we need leaders who stand for integrity, humility, and character. I will bring this to the Select Board, and I'll work with and for every business owner, every employee, every resident across all of Plymouth. And, you know, as I've lived here, I really come to appreciate Plymouth's rich history, and I'm really loving living now and enjoying our vibrant present, but I'm excited about Plymouth's future, and I ask for your vote on May 18th. And for more info about me, you can visit patrickforplummett.com. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We'll move on to Sheila Joyce.
Thank you, Melissa and Zach, for hosting us, and thanks to the viewers who've turned in. I represent and work for all of the residents in town. I don't make decisions in a vacuum. I consider myself fiscally conservative. I tell people it's not my money to spend, it's everyone's money, and that is why I do my homework. Please help me continue the work I started in 2016. On Saturday, May 18th, I ask you to please vote for me, Sheila Mary Joyce, I'm number two on the ballot, allowing me to return to the Select Board for a second term. Let me continue to help increase awareness in the town that we probably can't be all things to all people. We need to work together diligently and honestly, so we can be transparent and as fair as possible in deciding how we can meet the residents and the business priorities in town. Plymouth is a unique and wonderful town. Help me to continue making Plymouth a town we are all proud to live in and work in 365 days a year. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We'll move on to Frank Mann.
In a local election, there's a very small window of opportunity for residents to get to know the candidates. So townspeople often vote for individuals who are well-known to them, regardless of their stand on the issues. That's why here, and in dozens of posts on a variety of platforms serving our community, I've tried to offer you my view on those hot-button issues. But I don't want to get caught in the weeds. I don't want you to be distracted by the challenges we face every day from what I believe is the key issue for Plymouth, planning. Too often, the projects we have undertaken have been in reaction to problems we did not anticipate. We've done a marvelous job of responding when crises occurred, but if we are to move effectively forward, we need a plan, and before that, we need a vision. I don't want to be a caretaker. I don't want to be a ringmaster. I don't want to be part of the bucket brigade putting out the fires. I want to lead. I'm passionate about Plymouth. I have a vision for its future. I ask you to give me the opportunity to represent you by voting for me, Frank, though on the ballot it's my mother's name, Francis Mann, M-A-N-D, on the May 18th town election. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And we'll move on to Anthony Provenzano.
Thank you, PAC TV. Thank you, Melissa. Thank you, Zach, for having us. These are always great forums to allow us to connect to the people. I also, I think I would remiss if I did not send out a happy birthday greeting to my wife. Her age is a very, very closely held state secret, but I will say that it ends in a zero this year. Further, I want to thank the people of the town of Plymouth for the confidence that you've shown in me over these past six years. I've worked very hard, and I believe that I have the expertise, I have the experience, and I have the passion to do the very best job that I can as a member of the Board of Selectmen now, the Select Board. Please, I ask you to consider giving me your vote Saturday, May 18th, and I hope that we have high voter participation this year, because I said, as I said earlier in this forum, no form of government will survive well if we don't get strong voter participation. So please get out and vote and consider giving me a vote. I'm number one on the ballot. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you to all the candidates for participating in this forum. For our viewers, thank you for joining us. If you are interested in watching replays of our forum, please visit our website, pacTV.org/Plummettlection, for replay times on the Plymouth Government channel and to watch the forum on YouTube. For Melissa, myself, the candidates, and all of us at PAC TV, thank you for taking the time to join us to learn more about your candidates. And please, ensure your voice is heard. Cast your vote on Saturday, May 18th.